Good morning. It is nine o'clock. We'll call this July meeting of Lampington County Council to order and ask Ms. Legay to take the roll call, please.
Thanks, Warden Marriott. Councillor Agar?
President.
Councillor Atkinson?
President.
Councillor Bushy?
President.
Councillor Bradley? Councillor Broad?
President.
Councillor Case?
President.
Councillor Cook?
President.
Councillor Dennis?
President.
Councillor Ferguson?
President.
Councillor Hand? Councillor Luise?
President.
Councillor McRoberts?
President.
Councillor Miller?
President.
Councillor Sageman?
President.
Councillor Veem?
President.
Deputy Warden White?
President.
Warden Marriott?
Present.
And Councillor Bradley?
Present.
We have quorum.
Thank you. We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral land of the Chipewa, Odoa, and Potawatomi peoples referred to collectively as the Anishinaabe. It is through the connection of the Anishinaabe with the spirit of the land, water, and air that we recognize your unique cultures, traditions, and values. Together as treaty people, we have a shared responsibility to act with respect for the environment that sustains all life, protecting the future for those generations to come. I would ask any member of council to declare pecuniary interest now or where it may arise during the meeting. Councillor Veem?
Yes, when we get to TSL, I'll do declare.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Okay, we'll move on. Look for item number four in camera, motion to go in camera for the reasons noted in the agenda. Councillor Luise, seconded by Councillor Dennis, all in favor? Let's carry it and we'll be in Committee Room Three. Welcome back. Please join me for a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Item number seven, I'd ask Ms. Legay to rise and report from motions of in camera, please.
Thanks, Warden Marriott. I can report that Lampington County Council met in camera this morning for a few minutes. First, to review and approve the county council closed session minutes of June 5, 2024. And then, secondly, to review and approve the committee of the whole closed session minutes of June 19, 2024. That included receiving a report and providing instructions on a proposed acquisition in the city of Sarnia. And then, lastly, receiving a report and providing instructions with respect to negotiations between the county and a third party relating to a development project in the city of Sarnia.
Thank you. Item number eight, delegations, I'd look for a motion to invite presenters to come forward. Councillor Case and Councillor Atkinson, all in favor? Let's carry it. Thank you. Our delegation is Dr. Robert Dickerson, will be presenting to county council regarding implementation of traffic safety measures around London Road Public School, Sarnia. And you have 10 minutes, Dr. Dickerson.
Good morning, Warden Marriott and county councillors. I'm a first time presenting here in person, so thank you for the opportunity. I present about London Road. It started with the safety around London Road Public School, elementary school in downtown Sarnia. And my daughter goes to that school, so for disclosures, I have a personal stake at that, and I experienced a lot of issues there. And the first question that I... Okay, it's a why question. Why I'm presenting to you is because London Road is a county road. I know there's one of these little bit weird relationships in the county and the city that there's a road, county road, right through the city of Sarnia. And what I found out is that there will be a repaving happening soon. But for the why question is that it's always a perspective about the road. And if you're a car user, which I assume when you come from the county to the city, you most likely will come by car, you won't see any issues. It's beautiful road, you can drive there, and you don't feel anything was wrong with it. The perspective changes really quickly when you walk. And when you walk, it's unpleasant, and it's outright dangerous when you bicycle on London Road. And since a road is public land from curb to curb, the county in this case, the owner of the road, can do whatever they want to do with the road. We can leave it as is, or we can improve it. And if you want to be really crazy, you can build a monorail on it. Not recommending monorails, but I would like to have some improvements done to this road. And London Road, County Road 16, is now for several years on the docket for shaven pave. And it was pushed forward now to 2025, maybe, I don't know. But I would like to have a conversation between the county engineer and the city engineer to make sure that London Road is improved and enhance safety and share the mode of transportation to incorporate more of the active transportation, so walking, biking, taking the bus, and maybe take away a little bit from the car-centric approach that currently London Road has. There's a NCHRP research report, I cited it on the slide here, and there is always the perspective of we would like to have the most perfect flow of traffic at each moment of time. However, when we really look at that, there's the rush hour traffic. And if we design a road just to incorporate the rush hour traffic, what happened was the other 23 hours of the day, meaning that the road can be grossly overbuilt because we made the road to handle the rush hour traffic in the morning, and then again in the evening. And then, we have a wide open road that leads for motorists to misbehave or be negligent, not paying attention. And then, the conflict here is elementary school, because you're not paying attention at elementary school, it could be devastating. And I experienced that, that motorists just bolt through not seeing a school crossing guard in the middle of the road. That person was then fined ultimately, but it's not about fining people. I don't want this to happen. And the only way to prevent this is to change the design and not just hyper-focus on the 15 busiest minutes of the day. So I call this plain vanilla, so when the county comes in next year, hopefully, to do a shaven pave, we just leave it as is. So just do what needs to be done, take the top surface off, repave it and paint the lines. And then, we have the same issue again. However, there is a unique opportunity to improve it. And the improvement can be done by just changing the striping, so how the lanes are. And maybe even go a step further, and again, there's a conversation that ought to be done, the city engineers, these are the experts, to see maybe there's some available space for reconstructing. And I really rushed through because I don't have much time, but this is essentially the ideas out of this report, what can be done. And these are the simpler ways, and the idea is to reduce the speed and incorporate more of the active transportation and not necessarily limiting the amount of traffic come through. Again, I rushed through there, and any questions, I can answer them at the end. As you see here, again, like use the road you have and then make bus-only lanes and more bicycling lanes, less car or road diets, meaning you have travel lanes and turning lanes in the middle, because London Road right now, we have the configuration of two lanes in each direction, and the left lane in particular is dangerous because it's the passing lane as well as the turning lane and also obstruct vision, so the two-in-two configuration is dangerous. And a road diet with a middle turning lane is one of the options. Again, I'm not the engineer, just like trying to present some options quickly here. And again, bike lanes can be on one side and the other side. There's many, many, many ideas. We don't have to reinvent the wheel here. This is all very broad knowledge that's known already. Then the chicanes, that's like one of the issues with London Road, you'll see it in a moment, it's a very straight road, so chicanes, essentially, you have to shift left and right a little bit. So the contrast here, imagine London Road, super straight, and then think about a winding mountain road that goes zigzag, zigzag up there. Where you pay more attention, where you're more aware of your surrounding on the mountain road, because any mistake, you will go off the cliff. Meaning, if you were playing with your phone distracted, you won't do it on that mountain road. But the incentive to do it on London Road is there because its perception is safe. But if you're not paying attention, again, elementary school, it could be a devastating accident. So a chicane to go a little bit zigzag makes you pay attention more to the road. Some technical terms, but the realms, we have like from edge to edge, like the land use, pedestrian, transition realm, there could be the bicycle realm, then the travel realm. But what it is, it's not just about cars, bikes, or public transit, it's about the mix. We have to make the mix right, and this opportunity that comes up now with the London Road shaven pave is to make it right. So we have all the land already in public realm and how to make it better. I will go through an exercise now, really briefly, go from the west end of London Road, meaning it's in Talia Park Front Street. And by the way, the county did tremendous good work with fixing Front Street last year and adding bicycle lanes there. So do the exercise really quickly. And that's just my opinion, what land can be used to redistribution. So here, what green is like, okay, these are areas that can be redistributed or improved. And if any start particularly at the west end, do we need two lanes in each direction? I think that's grossly overbuilt because the road terminates there. It doesn't make sense to have so much capacity there. And if you walk this section there, the sidewalk is super narrow, and a lot of people trying to enter Centalia Park, so there's a need to distribute some of the land given to cars to pedestrians because there's lots of traffic and business going on there. The same, let me do this on a step further to the east now, Casino Street, which if you look on the aerial here, it's like a lot of land, they're almost bags, we can put a roundabout there, but again, just throwing out some judgments here. And this area of London Road is one of the widest in the city, so 5.5 lanes of asphalt and concrete, no shade, it's a heat sink, we have also a lot of pedestrian activities there, we have the church there, the 7-Eleven is frequently used there. Then we go further east, we approach now the trigger via scent, this letter to you, my presenting today is London Road Public School, and in yellow is like this crosswalk where I have to go across with my daughter and had several meter misses. This is perspective.
London Road School, this is with my daughter. Now I take Felix here to daycare, and we're going here to that school crossing. It's College and... College and London Road. When you stand here, the vision where it's supposed to stand is quite blocked. All right, let's go.
Oh, okay. So you get the idea how it feels to walk, and now the same thing while driving. And when we approach London Road School, which comes now on the right, you see actually a walking group of schools, pupils coming out, and when they step, it almost feels like stepping on the road. Watch now, watch now this moment here, the watch now. One of the options to add a little bit to this very simple shaven pave option is to be raised pedestrian crossing there, so essentially, it's an oversight speed bump, and that would force people to pay attention. And ultimately, if you're speed there, you wreck your vehicle there because you have to slow down for this. And this is also very well done in Europe with the vision zero method. Watch the time now, so I skipped a few things now. I tried to make London Road better here. Oops. Can I finish my thought? Okay, thank you. So this is London Road, ah, driving the wrong buttons here. So London Road here, the really wide spot, that's how it looks right now, and there's a program I used to redesign it, and if we redistribute it, reduce it to one lane, which London Road can easily be done, we actually have more capacity there, and the capacity is generated by more bike lanes. Okay, summarize, this was London Road before, '73, the big change happened, and we tried to be right, like there was nothing done wrong in the past. The city tried to do the best, back in the days, with the knowledge what they had, but now it's time to look what's possible and make it better to today's standards. That's that. Thank you very much, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer or any discussions whatsoever.
Thank you, Dr. Dickerson. Any questions for him at this time? Deputy Warden White?
Thank you, yeah. Thanks for your presentation. I'd just like you to maybe expand a little bit more on the experience of crossing the road at that school crossing, because the video was a little choppy and cut out a little bit, so maybe if you can just expand on the volume of students, pedestrians, and maybe what you generally see in terms of vehicular traffic, the speeds, that type of thing, just to help me understand the experience a little bit better.
Push the button again. Thank you, Deputy Warden White, for this question, and we had the pleasure to go there together. One day, you spent the time to walk there and see it firsthand, as some other councillors as well. So London Road School is the only 100% walking school left in Sarnia. So they have a courtesy bus for a physically not able student, but every student walks there. So we have about 250 students walking there, and London Road is like the catchment, the crossing at London Road is a catchment for the students coming from the south side. London Road, as shown, is a very straight road that leads to speeding. And in the morning, people in Russia, and there's the conflict, like, oh, the person who maybe is a little bit late to work or out of habit just drives faster because the road feels to drive faster, simply makes it incompatible with a school crossing. So what happens there is that people, when they drive there, and again, I apologize for the video being choppy, you look far ahead, it's like a tunnel vision, and you see the green light ahead of you, it's like, oh, I will make it. But you lose the peripheral vision, that's where pedestrians are. So when they have a group of students or even a school crossing guard dressed in yellow standing in the middle, you don't see it because the road leads you to not paying attention. Your brain shuts off, and then we have the dangers, and the dangers are the not paying attention, the speeding, and then simply some reckless behavior as well, because the road makes you not having this sense of danger, because in a vehicle, you're safe, but as pedestrian being hit at that speed, you will be dead.
Deputy, sorry, Councillor Hand?
Do you have any speed signs in that area? I know they've been added farther down on London Road, but in my community, we've noticed a difference by putting up some. It seems to have an impact, so if you had one, you know, between Christina and Mitten, perhaps, you know, the ones that go on the pole?
Thank you, Councillor Hand. There are no particular speed signs reminding you of the general speed limit of 50. The real trick is that a sign may help, but if the road design, what I tried to explain was a zigzag or something, I think Light Street, there are some improvements being done, it was like tremendous, like I like to go this way, and it's done really well there. But for that particular road, nothing makes you think, oh, there's danger. There are signs put up for school crossing, there are signs up for community safety zone, which if you misbehave, the fines are doubled. But this is only the last step enforcement. What we need is to make it essentially very less likely to misbehave and do these stupid things that happen there. So a speed limit signs are right, it may help, but ultimately, if you have to really pay attention and naturally drive slower, would be the best solution.
Sorry. What I was referencing was the speed sign that tells you what you're driving, the digital sign, and you've added some down farther on London Road, and you've added some recently, I've noticed, on Vital. But we have noticed a difference by putting up these indicators that some people do go, oh, and they slow down. Even as an interim step, that's all I was suggesting.
Yeah, thank you. I live on Vital Street, and we advocated to have these speed displays there. I noticed that they do help, but then motorists get used to it, because like what's the consequence of like going too fast? What would help, but it's very controversial, is like automatic speed enforcement, so meaning if you go faster, in particular the school crossing, I don't see why not, you get automatically a ticket going too fast.
Councillor Bradley?
When you're ready, Mr. Warden, I'll have a motion to refer this report, this request to staff.
Okay, thank you. We have a second for that? Sorry, I have another question, but would you like to second that?
No.
Okay, and go ahead, Councillor Sageman.
So first of all, just want to thank you for your presentation, really well done, really well researched. Everything that you're presenting is not controversial, is not new, it's proven in fact. A very prominent new urbanism planner, Jeff Speck, presented to us at Good Roads, and his book is called The Walkable City: 10 Rules for the Walkable City. Everything that you've shown us, he's proven in several cities across North America to reduce traffic flow, to calm traffic, to reduce accidents. So I think that as we all sort of consider this, that it's a good idea to remember that we can look up, do a little bit of research with Jeff Speck, and see that it is a proven concept, and it actually creates a really beautiful urban environment when it's executed correctly. So thank you for your presentation.
Any other discussion before I call the question? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, if any? Let's carry it. Thank you for your presentation, Dr. Dickerson. Item number nine, staff presentations. We have Mr. Ian Haney, the Program Supervisor, Homelessness Prevention and Social Planning Social Services, will be presenting to county council regarding Lampington County Housing and Homelessness Progress Report 2023. Welcome, Mr. Haney.
Good morning, everybody. As the Warden said, my name is Ian Haney, I'm a Program Supervisor in Social Services, specifically from the Homelessness Prevention and Children's Services Department. And I'm going to spend a bit of time today overviewing our most recent annual housing and homelessness report card that everybody has in front of them today. So in 2023, our community was faced with tremendous demand for housing and homelessness supports. As seen in other communities across Ontario and Canada, the level of housing precarity continues to rise, along with the elevated levels of poverty and the ongoing opioid crisis. Despite these significant challenges, progress has been made towards increasing the supply of affordable housing while maintaining the existing housing supply. Further, our community strengthened essential partnerships- Further, our community strengthened essential partnerships and coordinated programming to deliver as efficient and equitable homelessness prevention services as possible using our limited local resources. So folks will remember back in 2019, the County of Lampton developed the renewed housing and homelessness plan after extensive workshops, small group discussions and surveys that engaged local residents, individuals with lived experience, and agency experts, including the members of our Housing and Homelessness Advisory Committee. This plan has a clear vision, guiding principles, it offers goals, measurable key milestones for our community, and it's supported by both a needs report and a best practices report. Now, as we all know, the landscape regarding housing and homelessness has changed dramatically since 2019, particularly since the outset of the pandemic back in 2020. The level of housing precarity, the dramatic shift in housing affordability, the concurrent opioid crisis, and stagnant social assistance rates have led to dramatic increases in homelessness across our province and across our country. Every year, this council receives an update, a report card like the one in front of you, on our community's progress towards the milestones that are in our plan. It's a reflection of the coordinated collaborative efforts taken by dozens of local agencies to try and meet our community's needs. So the report you have is a, as I said, is a calendar year 2023 report. And I'll spend just a few minutes today highlighting some of the key initiatives from 2023 under our four goals in this plan. The first goal is to increase and sustain supply and appropriate mix of affordable housing. In 2023, efforts were taken towards increasing the supply of affordable housing while also maintaining our existing housing supply. County Council declared affordable housing and shelter the number one priority of council. To support this priority, an additional $2 million was contributed to our affordable housing reserve. Through funding from this reserve, the Affordable Housing Seed Funding Program was developed to provide up to $200,000 in funds to nonprofit developers looking to develop affordable housing to complete some of those pre-development activities. So three projects received funding under this program back in 2023. Two additional units were added to our community housing portfolio with occupancy occurring in 2023. Approval was also received to construct two additional units by converting non-residential spaces in existing community housing buildings towards residential units. And work will commence on this, of course, this year in 2024. To further support maintaining the existing community housing units in a fair state of repair, in addition to the $4 million of annual funding under our ten-year asset management plan, $2.3 million in funding was received under the National Housing Strategies Co-Investment Fund to complete necessary repairs. As council knows from receiving and endorsing the resultant report, back in the fall of 2023, a consultant was hired to develop a multi-year portfolio scale supportive and affordable housing strategic plan. And this plan will guide the creation of additional supportive and affordable housing units in our community. As council will know, of course, in 2024, we received an update that Indwell was the successful proponent of a request for proposals for a two-year partnership regarding supportive housing. So with Indwell, we will leverage their expertise to ensure the planning projects, the planned projects detailed in that Flourish Report are done right from the beginning. So selecting locations, the design of projects, obtaining planning approval, of course securing funding, and other pre-development work are all part of what our partnership with Indwell will create. The second goal in our plan is to increase access to affordable housing and the supports that meet people's needs to achieve housing stability. 2023 was a particularly challenging year for access to affordable housing. We've continued to see our wait lists and our wait times for subsidies grow. To combat this increase, more housing supply is required. When we see more affordable housing supply come online, our access to affordable housing will increase. And although this goal has been challenging, progress has been made. We've seen more households secure portable housing benefits in our community to ensure their rent remains affordable. So portable housing benefit can refer to a suite of rent supplements delivered by various local partner agencies as well as directly through the county that bridge the gap between one's income and then the elevated local rents. They're often directed towards priority populations. So for example, many of these benefits are targeted towards youth. We've seen the continuation of the Home Ownership Down Payment Assistance Program and Lampton Renovates Program, which support households enter homeownership or in completing repairs to allow them to remain in their currently owned home. The Lampton Renovates Program has been a vital piece in supporting low-income seniors to remain in their homes as they age, with funding being required for repairs and accessibility modifications. Renters have also continued to receive supports from our internal community support workers to support them in maintaining their current tenancy. You see there, on average, we support 141 households through those community support workers every month to sustain their tenancies. These internal supports are also augmented by various external partnerships, including those with CMHA, the End of the Good Shepherd, Sarnia Lampton Rebound, and Community Legal Assistance Sarnia, to name just a few. The third goal in our plan is to establish a coordinated housing and homelessness service system. In 2023, Lampton County strengthened its local housing and homelessness service system, building upon the successful implementation of coordinated access back in 2022, and the introduction and enhancement of several key initiatives. The key future focus goals that were outlined back in the 2022 Plan, the annual report, were all achieved in 2023 through collaborative efforts involving many local service providers. By strengthening partnerships with community access points, barriers to service delivery were further reduced, and best practices were more consistently applied across our system. In March of 2023, the county hosted the Stronger Together Summit on Addictions, Housing and Homelessness with local leaders across a broad range of sectors with more than 170 individuals attending. So through collaborative case conferencing, our homelessness system of care better enabled equitable service to the most vulnerable members of our community. By leveraging our quality, real-time data, Lampton was able to ensure efficient use of our limited local available housing opportunities. By pivoting our emergency housing solutions several times and extending community outreach solutions, our community was able to reduce a tremendous amount of health and social harms for those left with few or no housing options. The final goal in our plan is to end homelessness. So on the screen, you'll see a snapshot of our by names list, a by name list. The data is from December 31st, 2023, the last day in the calendar year. This is a real-time report, offering live data on all households experiencing some form of homelessness. So this is not the number of individuals that are sleeping outside. It's a much larger number that captures all of those that are provisionally accommodated. So for example, they could be couch surfing. They're in transitional housing, they're in emergency housing, and a much smaller group that is experiencing unsheltered homelessness. In 2023, our community continued to see the demand for homelessness services increase. Despite investment in preventative programming, in addition to an emphasis placed on permanent housing solutions and increasing access to the existing services that we had, the rate of households seeking homelessness supports in Lampton continues to outpace the available suitable local housing opportunities. So as our community struggles with both the opioid crisis and housing crisis, the cohort of individuals experiencing chronic homelessness also grew across 2023. So while these households were prioritized for service, their complex health needs often made securing or maintaining housing extremely difficult. The level of intensive supports that can be provided through fixed site supportive housing, in addition to strength-based multidisciplinary accessible mental health and addiction services, will be needed to progress many of those households along the housing continuum. So on your screen here, you'll see a host of agencies as well as their programs that are supported directly by our department that range from preventative services all the way to and including emergency services. So despite the overwhelming demand, our community is still producing significant preventative and long-term impact for hundreds of households experiencing homelessness. Our new Housing and Homelessness Resource Centre supported more than 1,700 visits by more than 200 unique individuals in just those few months that it was open in 2023, from June to December, offering multi-agency, low-barrier, multidisciplinary service. Our community, primarily through the End of the Good Shepherd, also supported 19,000 bednights across 2023 through emergency housing. Through services like arrears programs with St Vincent de Paul, Salvation Army, our internal municipal residency benefit program, county community support workers, case management with CMHA, and community outreach, Lampton progressed hundreds of households from an experience of homelessness into permanent housing, despite the tremendously competitive and unaffordable housing market, and prevented hundreds more from ever entering shelter, from ever experiencing chronic or unsheltered homelessness. So I encourage council to read the many stories that are included in that annual report in front of you to better see the positive impact that these many agencies have collectively on the many neighbors of ours that are or were precariously housed. So overall, in 2023, the rate at which households newly experienced homelessness continued to outpace the intensive and coordinated supports to divert them from shelter and progress them into permanent housing. Resultantly, the number of individuals experiencing homelessness in Lampton County continued to rise, including the demand for our limited local resources. 2023 was also a very challenging year for access to affordable housing, as I was saying. Lampton continued to see our wait list and our wait times for subsidies increase. As the demand for supports grow, more households will continue to age into an experience of chronic homelessness, resulting in further need for more accessible and supportive housing. So our role as service system manager is to deliver services as efficiently and equitably and effectively as possible, guided by best practices, not anecdote, and continue to offer clear, quality, real-time data of growing local need for consideration and further partnership with our upper levels of government. So looking ahead to this year, 2024, and to 2025, our community will undertake a refresh of the Housing and Homelessness Plan. As with previous iterations, this process will include broad community consultation, engagement with content experts, service delivery agencies, those with lived experience, and many more. A new assessment of the level of need in our community, an update on the goals that underlie that local plan, and ultimately guidance for our many local agencies working tirelessly to meet the incredible demand in our small community will be clarified with this plan refresh. Our community will continue to leverage all available local resources and partnerships to promote efficient, equitable, accessible service and make strides towards long-term goals for gains in affordable and deeply supportive housing solutions. So with the endorsement of council, the County of Lampton will continue to move forward with enacting its multi-year portfolio scale supportive and affordable housing strategic plan. The county will also be undertaking a media campaign specific to homelessness, wherein we hope to demystify this newer subject for our constituents, answer some frequently asked questions, better promote the effective and collaborative work that's already underway in our community, to humanize this issue. And centrally, this campaign is meant to offer our very passionate, very vocal community members with clear avenues for them to be part of the solution. So I appreciate everybody's time this morning. Thank you very much for your continued support, not just of the county team, but of those many service providers that are working tirelessly to support our unhoused neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Haney. Questions for Mr. Haney? Councillor Agar?
Thank you. Good report. Obviously, the largest need in the county is affordable housing. But in terms of dollars per month, what do you consider affordable? If somebody's working and they're making minimum wage and they can't come up with that two grand or whatever a month, we need to find something else. Like if we're building, affordable, that's a great thing. But we need to have something else for like a geared-to-income deal to help the people who are working and can't afford it because it gives no incentive even for affordable housing. So I would just like to see something like that down the road, too. Thanks.
Mr. Haney?
If I could comment quickly, through the chair, thank you councillor for the question. Our subsidized housing, our social housing, is delivered in a manner much like you're describing right now, where it's rent geared to income, and that changes with one's income. And we have those many portable housing benefits that I described that's meant to bridge the gap between, say, those individuals in receipt of social assistance, those stagnant, very low social assistance rates, and as we're seeing, those continually elevated local rent rates. We also, through that long-term supportive housing plan, intend to deliver those appropriate wraparound mental health and addictions supports to those that need more than just that rent supplement, that need that intensive wraparound support to maintain stably housed for long term.
Councillor McRoberts?
Through the chair. I believe Ms. Colasanti can help me with this. Thank you for the talk earlier. I would like the communities to understand at this point, this plan is wonderful, but what do we do now? MPP Bailey answered some questions, but I don't think that our constituents are hearing it loud and clear. The now is the lawbreakers, the addiction, and then those that need to be perhaps institutionalized of some form. Are these safe people that, and we keep hearing that there are beds, there are beds, there are beds, but are these the folks that are going to go to a shelter and be safe for those that are not violent, not addicted? My point would be, the Ontario government has got to do something to help us because folks are upset now. Their properties are being stolen from, wrecked, communities are being broken. But what does a municipality or a county do when we say we have lots of beds and the folks that need them are going there? But there are other people that are a part of this puzzle that we can't handle them. And there's no cells for them to be arrested and sent to, so they're right back on the street. We have folks that are harmful to themselves and to others. And then we have those that are addicted that seven beds at Blue Water Health are not going to cover this and help us. So we are at, what do we do now to save our community members? And again, when people say, but there's beds, there's beds, there's beds in the community, sure, there are for those that are safe enough to go into that facility with 40 other people. But what do we do with the folks that are a harm now? And if you can please, Ms. Colasanti, do you believe these folks are safe to come in there with other people that maybe can't defend themselves? Thank you.
Ms. Colasanti, please.
Certainly. Through you, Warden Marriott, to councillor McRoberts. I am actually going to ask Ian Haney to start the response to this, just because he spends a little bit more time in Rainbow Park and in the encampment, and he's also in the shelter every day and our resource centre. Ian?
Thank you, through the warden. It's an excellent question. The county specifically has a role to play as it relates to safety within shelters. As you described, we have shelter standards that we work closely with through the End of the Good Shepherd to ensure that there's safety within shelters. The occasional time, if, say, there's elevated violence, then we will enforce what will always be a temporary service restriction. But we also collect real-time data by person for why folks aren't or not accessing shelter. This is one of the pages that we have on our website. We share this on a month-by-month basis. The most common reasons are, of course, their active addictions, folks that are choosing based off of relationships, if it's that they want to stay outside with someone else, they want to avoid other individuals that are in shelter. Those are the common reasons why folks aren't accessing shelter. I would say, perhaps speaking to the core of the issue that you're describing councillor, there is a general paucity of the intense mental health and addiction supports that we need in our community, which are essential to addressing the long-term life stability goals for many of those, I would argue dozens of the households that are sleeping unsheltered. So our long-term plan for this is to introduce that true fixed site supportive housing. Our community has the benefit of very quality, real-time data of a very coordinated and efficient system that allows us to have a unified voice, a clear voice to our upper levels of government to say, this is how far we can take our limited local resources. Here's our current remaining demand. This is how much more support we need. We also have that very acute data to say, how many of those folks have elevated mental health and addictions needs? And so we can be even more specific with that potential request to upper levels of government. But at the high level, I would say, yes, there's a paucity, there's a lack of available intensive mental health and addiction supports. Having them fixed alongside the fundamental social determinant of housing will lead to those long-term outcomes that we need.
Follow up councillor McRoberts?
How much money are we going to spend as a municipality and a county to try and help the folks that are just out of our reach? Like at what point do we know that it's just we're burning the midnight oil that it's never going to happen?
Mr. Haney, please.
Thank you, through you, Warden. I would say, yes, our community has identified that, and we know from research and from best practice, that early intervention is far more cost-effective. That's why we've invested in so many preventative services. Coordination with the expensive emergency services, which I believe is what you were describing, to serve those individuals when they reach that point, is the best way that we can maximize our limited available local resources. But generally speaking, yes, if folks reach the point of chronic homelessness, of unsheltered homelessness, with those complex needs, then the cost is going to be borne by municipalities to serve them through emergency services.
Next, I have Deputy Warden White and then councillor Dennis.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. Thank you, Mr. Haney, for the presentation. That was excellent. Really well done, very thorough. Really appreciate, first off, the trajectory that we've been on. I think staff is doing an unbelievable amount of heavy lifting, especially the frontline staff who see stuff every day that most of us read about and no further. So first off, kudos to that. And secondly, the refresh that's coming, I think, is obviously very timely, being able to adapt. Being able to adapt and shift as we see in very real time the reality that all of us face in our own communities change is going to be incredibly important. So much appreciation for that as well. Last night, I watched a special on CBC, if you didn't see it. Well, not a special, but it was part of the national, a feature on some programming in Pembroke. Relative, of course, but one of the stats, I think, that came out of there that was very important, I think, for us to drill down to when we're talking about our plan here and essentially high-acuity supports in terms of housing, is the multi-tiered options that we do really face as the alternatives to having folks live in the parks. And Counselor McRoberts alluded to it. Jails are one of them. Hospital beds are another. And then the supportive housing that we're moving towards here comes out as by far the most effective and cost-efficient option at roughly $3,500 per month, according to what I was watching last night in Pembroke. Is that relative to what you're planning on here and what you're seeing in terms of our options, our cost comparators, our hospitals, jails, and then supportive housing ends up being the most effective and cost-efficient?
Mr. Haney, please.
Thank you, through you, Warden. I couldn't comment specifically on the costs that are identified in that report. I haven't seen it. Generally speaking, we know that addressing one's housing insecurity, being as upstream as possible by addressing our social determinants of health, is always going to be more cost-effective than addressing an individual's needs once they reach the point of requiring emergency services. So of course, if we can have permanent housing solutions for individuals and for many of those that are now at the point of chronic homelessness with high acuity needs, that means supportive housing for long-term solutions, it's going to be more cost-effective, not just for the municipality, but of course, for the upper levels of government. I hope that answers your question. I'm happy to follow.
Counselor Dennis?
Thank you, Warden Marriott. The best way to get someone off of Social Security is to get them off it. You know, we're not doing any good by enabling people. The fact of the matter is, is we're never going to eliminate poverty because the standard for poor, to be poor, is going to continue to rise. The people in Rainbow Park are arguably much better off than the poor in Somalia or the poor in Haiti, and as far as homelessness is concerned. You know, if we finally get to that goal where everybody is housed, then you're going to have people complaining that the housing that they rent isn't nice as it should be. We're not going to solve this problem until we get an economy that spews out good jobs for everybody. We cannot have a society where you have a group of makers working their tails off, providing, and you have a group of, I don't, there's a word I want to use, but I know people will be offended by it, but you can't have a group of people just sitting and doing nothing while another group of productive people pay the freight. You just can't have that. You know, and I realize there's a group of people making an awfully awful good living off of poverty and trying to help these people, but these people have to help themselves. They really do. And of course, when you say that, people look at you like you're biting the head off a kitten, but it's the truth. And it's not, I'm not being unsympathetic, it's just the truth. A lot of these people are in that position because they put themselves in, because of the result of bad decisions, and it's the truth. And we, there's only one taxpayer, and why should people that have worked hard all their lives, they've made proper decisions, and they're being punished, but they're going to have to pay more taxes to support people that hadn't? And I see it in Sarnia. I see it in Sarnia, and people are very, very upset about what's happening, extremely upset.
Okay. Anybody else? Counselor Hand, please.
Understand now that there's been, you know, the, sorry, they selected the tender for, not flourish, but indwell, sorry. Can you give us a rough idea of what are the next steps? Because we keep talking about getting that supportive housing. And while I'm up here, just a reminder, there is a fundraising event at Mackinac on the waterfront by the Rotary towards the Casino Land. Heather Martin and John and that group, it's their second year, so that's coming up, and the money they raise goes to the supporting housing. I just wondered, what are kind of the next steps to finally get a build? Thank you.
Ms. Colasanti, please.
Certainly, through you, Warden Marriott, to Counselor Hand. So our next steps are to start to work with Indwell. They're actually coming down later this month to tour the properties. As you know, through the Flourish report, there were five properties identified, and a couple of them are located within the community of Sarnia, and we're hoping to get started on those with the supportive housing. There are three different levels of supportive housing under the Indwell model, and we'll be looking at the middle model, the enhanced model to start with. Those would be individuals who do require some mental health, perhaps addiction supports, things like that, so starting to do that work. While we're starting to develop the site plans and zoning and work through that process, we're also doing some advocacy work. We need to receive dollars for the operational funding right now. Even though council has put dollars toward the supportive housing reserve, we still need additional dollars for the annual operating budget. We recently met with Associate Minister of Health, Mr. Tabullo. He requested a budget from us. We have submitted that based on what Indwell has provided us with their average costing. Of course, at this time, it is just an estimate. When we have more details on that exact costing and we know the number of units, we will bring a fulsome report to council. So work is going along, and as I said, it's three-pronged. It's moving forward with the properties, moving forward with the advocacy for funding, and moving forward on what exactly supports are needed. And we'll also be looking to work with the local college, with Lampton College, on the staffing for there because we do know that we'll need some additional staff, and we're struggling in Sarnia and Lampton County right now to find some of those staff. So we want to get ahead of that and start to work with the college on a plan for that, similar to what we did with the workforce development for the ECE program for children's services.
That's great. I appreciate that and like to see that connection with the college.
Okay. Counselor Case, you have a question?
Yes, through you, Mr. Warden, to our treasurer. Do we know how many dollars that we have spent to date on this situation, which is going on in the city of Sarnia at Rainbow Park, as far as resources that the County of Lampton provided? I hate to put you on the spot.
Mr. Polarkio, please.
I don't have an exact dollar figure, but I can tell you it's very significant, and it's in the millions of dollars that you've put towards affordable housing. You may recall that you've started a contribution to the Affordable Housing Reserve around $1.2 million a few years ago, increased to $2 million year thereafter, and $3 million as part of this 2024 budget, and we've utilized every contribution to that reserve in order to provide that affordable housing service delivery through our operating programs and capital projects.
Follow-up, Counselor Case.
Yeah, if I couldn't, Mr. Warden, and I mean, the money had to be spent. There's no debt about it. We have responsibilities at County of Lampton when it comes to social services. But what's really frustrating is this is not just a social services issue. Obviously, it's not just a city of Sarnia issue. It also gets into law enforcement, which, again, obviously is connected to the city of Sarnia with their policing costs. I would like to make a motion that we ask for a meeting with the Minister of Municipal Affairs at the AMO Conference. I know it's been cut off. I don't know what we have asked for. I know we're advocating. It doesn't even have to be during the AMO Conference. Let's take the AMO Conference side of it, that we ask for a meeting with the Minister of Municipal Affairs to address this issue. It's a serious issue, one that the costs keep going up, they're not going to go down. I know there's no silver bullet when we talk about an issue like this, but we really do need to try to advocate for the funding that we need to make this work. And when you have people that are homeless, that's one situation, but when you have people that are unlawful and are creating situations and obviously impacts on communities, that's another. So I'd like to make a motion that we ask for that meeting with the Municipal Affairs Minister to have this discussion about the situation in our community as well as the funding attached to it. So I'll make that motion if I get a second.
Okay. Counselor McRoberts, seconds that discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the question, all in favor of the motion. Opposed, if any, that's carried. Is there any other questions before I let Mr. Haney go? Looks like you're free, Mr. Haney. That brings us to item number 10, minutes of open session. Council, June the 5th, motion to adopt these minutes, please. Counselor Sagman moves, seconded by Counselor Miller. All in favor? Let's carry. Thanks. Item number 11, Board of Health, Dr. Dewick, please. So we have three information reports here. I'd look for a motion to receive and file unless there's questions within those. Moved by Counselor Agar, seconded by Counselor Atkinson. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. Anything else for the Board of Health? Seeing nothing? Thank you, Dr. Dewick. Item number 12, we have no correspondence, and item number 13, no information reports. Item number 14, items not requiring a motion, so a motion to receive all three sets of minutes. Counselor Case and Counselor Cook. Discussion, Counselor Bradley.
Yes, for the members of TSL, I've asked repeatedly for a full disclosure of their budget, the audited statements. I've tried numerous times with Mr. Perron, and all I got was a very two-page draft budget. I'd like to request whoever leave their hands on there. I don't understand why that document would not be available publicly, which is the TSL audited statements they do every year.
Okay. Who would like to try and respond? Dr., or sorry, Mr. Tifo, maybe?
Thank you, Warden Marriott. Just so I understand, Counselor Bradley, are you asking for a motion for the county to ask for that information and to redistribute to councils through our channels?
For where? I've copied you on these emails, asking, and all I get back is a very superficial two-page draft budget from a year or two ago. So these are public documents. I don't know why it's so difficult to get them. So this is the way to do it. I'll ask a motion just to have the audited statements, and if you go to the TSL minutes, there's very little in there. It just says, we did this, we did this, but it doesn't give you any of the background on what they actually did. So that's my motion, simply the TSL surprise, their audited statements to County Council as now and as a part of the budget process.
Okay. Did we have a second for that? Seconded by Counselor Lucely. That's a discussion. Go ahead, Counselor Lucely.
Warden Marriott, I just wondered if we could include to have them circulate the minutes a little faster instead of waiting so long to get the minutes?
Okay, noted. Any other discussion on the motion? Counselor Agar?
Thank you. Just, I know the under 17 hockey challenge is a big thing in there, and that's going to bring millions of dollars. So if we can put in it, too, how much actually gets brought to our area with this, not just their budget, but how much they actually receive out of it, because I know there's millions involved. So thank you.
Counselor Bradley?
This has nothing to do with the programming. It has to do with concerns raised about some of the spending and the use of personnel at TSL. That's what this is about. That's what this, asking for the audited documents, nothing further.
Just to be clear, for us to ask TSL, that's a separate board, like, what would the protocol be there? Mr. Tifo?
Yep. Nope. If we're instructed by County Council to make a request for the audited financial, the latest audited financial statements to be presented for circulation to County Council, we'll make that request. We're in a position, perhaps, to make that request, given the fact that we grant them a chunk of their operating budget, and we'll see what kind of response we get from there.
Okay. There's no further discussion, I'll call the question, all in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. So motion to receive and file those three items? Did we have a motion on the floor, right? So all in favor of that? Let's carry. Brings us to 15, reports requiring a motion, long-term care. Report dated today regarding small house development plan update. Look for a motion, Counselor Miller, and seconded by Counselor Cook. Discussion, Counselor Bradley?
I had a question to the treasurer. I recognize, I think you've said this $10 million will be a repayable debt. Is that correct? But where does this put our debt load when you add in the $10 million and the other obligations the county have taken on the last six months? Where does this put us on the debt? If you don't have the answer right now, because I didn't give you a notice, it'd be fine if you just got back to us by email, if you can't do it right now.
Mr. Polarkio, please.
Great question. I sort of anticipated, anytime basically you have significant debt dollars, it's wise to ask where we are with our debt levels. You know, I encourage you to potentially request a report as far as where corporate debt is in the September, October time period, but on this particular, really directly, we're approximately about $45 million of authorized debt that we basically were at, but we're still well below our provincial thresholds, and some of this debt, specifically in this case, where there's about $7.8 million worth of debt that's being requested to be authorized, 80 or 90% of it is recoverable through increased subsidy through the province. So in fact, you know, basically, when you're asking for additional debt, and you know, there's a good business case that a good chunk of it is recoverable. It's very similar to, you know, we've increased our debt load with Lampton Shared Services, but our rent payments are significantly, it's a trade-off between mortgage payment and rent, and there's a good deal on that portion as well.
I've been on the view for many years with the province that if there's recoverable revenue on debt, whether it be a water plant, a sewage plant, or this type of project, it should not be considered debt.
Mr. Polarkio, please.
Through the chair, it's the classification of debt. You can call it unrecoverable debt or recoverable debt, and we would distinguish that, classify that in any, you know, corporate finance management report, but it is, point very well taken.
I'm fine, Mr. Warden. Just report to us in the normal process and the fall. That would be fine, just where we're going with this.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion, call the question on the motion? All in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. Item number 16, Committee of the Whole, open session minutes of June 19th, and the Audit Committee minutes as well on June 19th. Motion to receive and file, Counselor Ferguson and Counselor Lucy. And you want to speak to that, Counselor Ferguson?
On the Woodlot bylaw that was updated, I wasn't here for the last meeting. So thank you, Warden, and I'd like to thank staff for the, they were given the task to update the Woodlot bylaw for the fees and actionable items. By accepting the update, we can preserve what we have. We're not asking to increase woodlot cover, but we're preserving what we have. The update still allows removal of fence rows and squaring of woodlots. As a farmer with large equipment, you have to get your equipment around and do things. On the drainage side, also, if you've got triggers getting into tiled drainage, you can remove those trees. It's not stopping you on that end. Council gave direction in 2021 to update, to modernize the language and improve the applicability and enforceability, and outlines how property owner appeals can be heard. A significant number of requests were for fence line and scoring up for ease of farming, taking this into mind the size of modern-day equipment. There's been, since 2021, there's been no asks for clearcutting, so it's been three and a half years with no asks for that part of it. But the other part, the management part, that is laid out, and it can be done. Now let's look at the forest side of the past generations. We have different parks throughout the county. We have Rock Glen, we have the Pioneer, Pickford Oakwoods, Shetland, and the Jewel is the interior nature preserve south of Alveston, the rarest piece of property in Canada, second rarest in North America. Let's look at the economic side of it. With the larger rainfall happening, I'd like to point out the damage to roads in the last two years. How many roads are blown out in Lampton County last year? How many roads are blown out in Lampton County last year during that big rain event? Woodlots act as a water sink to release the water slowly. So it's an economic side too, to retain what we have, to help mitigate damage if we can see further down the road. And I'd just like to point out that the grant in Lampton Shores last week, $52,000 to this Boy Scouts camp to enhance and improve the oak savannah globally rare ecosystem. Steve Pinsono, the MPP for the area, was there, is excited to see the funding is in place, and he stated, "This funding empowers the youth scout candidate to make a real difference and take the lead in protecting the local ecosystem." I would like to bring this back to the floor, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve the recommendation. Thank you.
So we had a motion on the floor, uh, we asked to pull item number six and receive and file everything but item number six. All in favor of that first motion, of that motion? Opposed, if any? That's, okay. So to your motion, Counselor Ferguson? Would you like to repeat that, please?
Just the last part? No, I would like to accept the recommendation of staff. We're gonna have a second or, please.
Seconded by Counselor Dennis. Discussion? Counselor Broad?
Sorry, I'm a little confused. I thought this was defeated.
But it's, because we're dealing with the minutes of, of Committee of the Whole, we have to pass, it's the same we've done in the past where it, it, he's asked to have it, uh, voted on at full council, so...
So, so the motion is, that he's requesting is to, uh, vote on this as full council? That the motion that we have defeated already? Is that what the request is?
Would you like to, uh, clear that up? Ms. Legay?
Yes, thank you for the question, Counselor Broad, through the warden. So you're correct. Committee of the Whole defeated, uh, the recommendation that was put forth by staff. However, it does need to go through the channels to county council for final consideration and approval. So at this time, uh, the motion that just passed was that Committee of the Whole minutes as presented, save and except for item number six, was approved, and now we are dealing with item number six, which is the Woodland Bylaw.
Counselor Lucely? Oh, sorry. Did you have a follow? Sorry, Counselor Lucely, did you have a follow-up? Counselor Broad?
So just so I understand, we will be voting on the recommendation, which we defeated, is what we'll be voting on?
Correct. Exactly. Yeah. See, the committee, previous committee AMPM, it's an invite, but now it's Committee of the Whole, it's an advisory to council, so it does have to be confirmed.
So a yes vote is to go with the staff recommendations, a no vote is to go against the recommendations.
Correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Lucely?
Yeah, thank you, Warden Merritt. Do we not have a motion on the floor already to receive and file this?
We, we received everything but item number six that we're discussing.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion before I call the question? Counselor Broad?
Uh, could I get a recorded vote, please?
Sure. Noted. Counselor Dennis?
It, just, perhaps, uh, Counselor Broad could refresh my memory. It had to do with, uh, Brush being cut down, I believe, and, um, uh, if, I recall you speaking, sir, at the last, uh, meeting, and really, if you could, uh, repeat what you had said at the last meeting, I, I'd like to, uh, if you could refresh my memory and perhaps others too, please.
Counselor Broad, please.
Thanks, Counselor Dennis, I will. Uh, the big thing for me is, was the removal of the exemption. Well, we got a request here to remove the exemption. The exemption hasn't been abused, that I know of, in a large number of years. I don't understand why we want to remove an exemption. I know we had a group that came here, made a presentation, who own approximately under 100 acres of woodlot. We seem to have these, uh, organizations that like to make a lot of rules for other people that do have a large number of acres of woodlots. I know the, uh, my farming community and owners of woodlots in Doniafemia has did an awesome job. They do an awesome job making sure that everything is going smoothly in there. They don't need to calculate what's in their bush, they know what's in their bush, and they do an awesome job. I am against the exemption, uh, component that was in there, because we've had no problems. Why are we putting, removing the exemption out of there? Makes no sense to me. That's why I will be voting against it again. Thank you.
Counselor Ferguson?
If we could modify to remove that one piece, satisfy Mr. Broad, update the rest of the language within that, that still brings exemptions back to the committee, which I am part of. So could I, if I could have a second or two amend that, what I did, to remove the exemption and bring that back to the committee, which is, which is gonna be in place if it's defeated anyway?
Is there a second or for the amendment? Deputy Warden White, seconds. Discussion on the amendment? We'll call the question on the amendment first. All in favor of the amendment? Opposed? That's defeated. So we'll go back to the original motion. If there's no further discussion, I'll call the question. I'm a recorded vote, sorry. Uh, I'll turn it over to Ms. Legay, please.
We have a recorded vote requested by Counselor Broad, and we're starting with Counselor Bradley. I have a no. Counselor Broad?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Case?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Cook?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Dennis?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Ferguson?
Yes.
I have a yes. Counselor Hand?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Lucely?
No.
I have a no. Counselor McRoberts?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Miller?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Sagman?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Veen?
No.
I have a no. Deputy Warden White?
No.
I have a no. And Warden Marriott?
No.
Oh.
Yeah, you have three more.
Counselor Agar?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Atkinson?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Bushi?
No.
I have a no. Now, Warden Marriott?
No.
I have a no. That is defeated.
Okay. So we, we've adopted the minutes. Item number 17, there are no items tabled from previous meetings. Number 18, there are no notice of motions unless there's some. Counselor Bradley?
I will serve a notice of motion for the September meeting, which is ask the county legal staff to look at if, as the situation changes, and there's a court decision yesterday out of U of T, different issue, but it was about encampments, if it changes, uh, the role of the county and what role the county would play on seeking an injunction to deal with camping in parks across this county, and to have that ready if and when there's a decision made and things do not change, to move forward in that direction. So I'm giving notice because I understand the county would need to be part of any injunction process, because you have access to all the information we do not have, because the city's not in that business. But that's a notice of motion for debate at the next meeting in September.
Okay. Noted. Any other notice of motions? That brings us to other business. Counselor Broad?
Uh, thank you, thank you, Warden Merritt. Um, with great pleasure, I can announce today that the Minister of Environment is requiring a comprehensive environmental review for the drazza landfill. I want to thank my colleagues of Lampton County and the ratepayers for getting behind this, uh, objective that we got. I know this is just a small win. We can't, uh, we can't let up yet, but, uh, definitely was something that was much appreciated, and hopefully the, the information will lead us in the right direction on it. Uh, item two, um, we have a gentleman from the township of Doniafemia, Nick Wamas. Congratulations to Nick. He has made the, he'll be representing Team Canada at the Summer Olympics in cycling, and Nick and his parents live in Doniafemia, and we wish Nick much luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other business? Counselor Atkinson?
Thank you, Warden Merritt. I'd just like to announce that on Wednesday, July the 10th, the Memorial Cup will be in the Wyoming Legion, hosted by Garrett Rutledge, who is a Wyoming resident from years ago. He's coming back to his hometown to show the Memorial Cup and special invitation to those London Knights fans that would like to come and see it. It's, it's there in Wyoming for your touching, and photos are available. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you, Counselor Atkinson. Any, anyone else with other business? Seeing none, uh, ask Ms. Legay for a notice of bylaws, please.
It is moved by Counselor Sagman, seconded by Counselor Veen, that bylaw 19, 20, and 21 of 2024, as circulated, be taken as read for a first and second time.
All in favor? That's carried.
It is moved by Counselor Sagman and seconded by Counselor Veen, that bylaw 19, 20, 21 of 2024, as circulated, be taken as read for a third and final time.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Brings us to adjournment. Next meeting would be September the 4th, 2024, within camera, to start at 9:00 a.m. And I note some invitations as well before we go to O Canada. Um, three for our, our retirement homes, Marshall Golan Manners BBQ, North Lampton Lodge, and Lampton Metabee Villa. Um, please join me, or sorry, motion to adjourn. Sorry, Counselor Hand.
And the invitation to the BBQ in Pointe Road on September the 4th.
Thank you for that, Counselor Hand. Thanks for hosting that. Motion to adjourn? Counselor McRoberts and Counselor Lucely, all in favor? Let's carry. Please join me with O Canada.